I'm gonna go ahead and start with the employee recognitions. Hello, everybody. We're ready to start with employee recognitions. So Joe, go ahead.
So, so thank you, everyone, for coming today. So today is our opportunity to thank our employees that their anniversary has come. We are giving out service pins, starting at five years, 10 years, 15, every, every five years of service. So this is our quarterly ceremony that we have. We do have some employees that are present, and those that were unable to make it, I'm going to talk about them as well. So first up, we have five-year pins. The individuals that are being recognized for this are Rommel Bennett, Fire Department, five years, Emergency Medical Service. Rommel began working for the City of Apopka on July 3, 2017, as a firefighter first class in suppression. On March 14, 2019, he was transferred to the EMS Division where he serves today. Hector Cartagena? Cartagena, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. My wife would, would do the same, yeah. So Hector Cartagena, Fire Department, five years, Emergency Medical Service. Hector began his career with the City of Apopka on February 3, 2017, as a volunteer firefighter. On July 3, 2017, he was hired as firefighter first class in suppression. On March 30, 2021, he was transferred to the EMS Division. He was promoted to fire engineer on May 1, 2022, and continues to serve in that position. Steven Dematis, Fire Department, five years, Emergency Medical Service. Steven began working for the City of Apopka Fire Department on July 3, 2017, as a firefighter first class in the Emergency Medical Service Division, and he continues that today. Riley Furtick, Fire Department, five years, fire depression. Riley began his career with the City of Apopka on January 25, 2017, as a volunteer firefighter. On July 3, 2017, he was hired as a firefighter first class in suppression, where he is today. Zachary Furtick, yes, that's his brother. Zachary began his career with the City of Apopka Fire Department, January 25, 2017, as a volunteer firefighter. On July 3, 2017, he was hired as a firefighter first class in Suppression Division, and he celebrates five years as well. Next, we have Tremonte Flowers, Fire Department, five years, Emergency Medical Service. Tremonte began working for the City of Fire Department on July 3, 2017, as a firefighter first class in the Emergency Medical Service Division, where he serves today. Next is John Force, Fire Department, five years, Emergency Medical Service. John began working for the City of Apopka on July 3, 2017, as a firefighter first class in suppression, and was transferred to EMS on October 3, 2017. He was promoted to fire engineer on July 31, 2022, where he serves today. Kyle Lamp, Fire Department, five years, Emergency Medical Service. Kyle began working for the City of Apopka on July 3, 2017, as a firefighter first class in suppression. On February 14, 2021, he was promoted to fire engineer. He was again promoted on May 1, 2022, to fire lieutenant, which is his current position. Kyle holds state certifications as a fire officer one, fire inspector one, incident safety officer, and pump operator. He takes pride in working for the same city he grew up in. Jennifer Rawlison, Fire Department, five years, Emergency Medical Service. Jennifer began her career with the City of Apopka on July 5, 2016, as a fire, as a volunteer firefighter. On July 3, 2017, she was hired as a firefighter first class in suppression. She was transferred to EMS on March 14, 2019, and continues to serve in that capacity. Louis Rivera, Fire Department, five years, Emergency Medical Service. Louis began working for the City of Fire Department on July 3, 2017, as a firefighter first class in the Emergency Medical Service Division, and he continues there today. Brian Charbonneau, Fire Department, five years, Emergency Medical Service. Brian began working for the City of Apopka on July 3, 2017, as a firefighter first class in the Emergency Medical Service Division. On February 28, 2021, he was promoted to the rank of fire engineer. He was again promoted on May 1, 2022, to fire lieutenant, and continues to serve in that capacity today. Tyler Whitaker, Fire Department, five years, fire suppression. Tyler began working for the City of Apopka Fire Department on July 3, 2017, as a firefighter first class in the Emergency Medical Service Division. He continues to serve there today. Next, we have Steven Brick, Police Department, 30 years of service today, in support services. I was wondering where he was, I thought he escaped. So Steve began working for the City of Apopka on September 16, 1992, as a police officer. He was promoted to police sergeant on April 19, 2005. On November 14, 2010, he was promoted to police lieutenant, and he continues to serve our community in this position today. Born in Herkheimer, New York, Steve was raised in the Miami-Fort Lauderdale area. He moved to Central Florida in 1981, and is a graduate of Lyman High School. In addition, he holds an Associate of Arts degree from Seminole State College, an Associate of Science degree in Communications, Applications Technology, and a Bachelor's of Science degree in Public Safety and Security from Florida State University. Furthermore, he retired as a chief master sergeant for the Air Force Reserves. One of the most notable work achievements was creating the first field training and evaluation program from scratch for the Police Department. Steve also looks back fondly on the promotion ceremony at City Hall, when six members of the force were promoted to the rank of sergeant. Families and friends were in attendance, and it was a very special occasion. When not at the station, Steve enjoys spending time with his wife, children, and grandson. He's an active community volunteer, member of the Apopka Rotary, past master of the Masonic Lodge, and past potentate of Bahia Shrine, Shriners Hospital for Children. Well-known for his height, when you ask him just how tall, he will slyly respond that he's 5'18". I have a little silhouette drawn. I have a request to maintenance, to cut out a little silhouette of his head, so he fits through my door, but that hasn't happened yet, so he still has to duck. Steve Harmon, Steven, Police Department, 20 years of service today. Steven began working for the city on September 30, 2002. On October 27, 2013, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant, which is his current position. Throughout his distinguished career, he worked patrol for six years, K-9 for six years, has been a sergeant for eight years, a member of SWAT for 16 years, and honor guard for 20 years. Steven was raised right here in Apopka and graduated from Apopka High School. Afterward, he attended Florida State University and the University of Central Florida, where he earned his Associate of Arts degree. It should come as no surprise that Steven's fondest memory of working for the city is marrying the former police chief secretary. I'm not even gonna ask about that. Stephanie. So Stephanie's not here, I don't think, so we, together, they enjoy spending time with their beautiful daughter. Next, Carol McMaster, Police Department, celebrating 25 years of service today. I won't say these things smart, so. Carol started working for the city on September 29, 1997, as a police officer. She was promoted to police sergeant on April 19, 2006, and continues to serve our community in this position today. Carol has lived in Central Florida all of her life. She was born in Orlando and grew up in Altamont Springs. Between friends and church activity, she spends much of her teen years here in Apopka. Carol graduated from Lyman High School and further her academics at Seminole State College, where she obtained her law enforcement certificate and her associate's degree. She then obtained her bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Columbia College. In 2008, she attended the University of Louisville's Southern Police Institute Command Officers Development Course. In addition, she is a certified assessor for both the Florida Commission for Law Enforcement Accreditation and for the Florida TAC Accreditation Commissions. Carol has been married to her husband for 20 years, and they have two wonderful children who keep them very busy. Their son Larson is 18 years old and attends Daytona State College, where he plays baseball and is studying engineering. Their daughter Jordan is 15 and attends Apopka High School. She's in the medical magnet program, Beta Club, student government class council, and she enjoys riding horses. When not at work, Carol enjoys spending time with her family and friends out on their boat or at the beach. They also enjoy attending sporting events and concerts. When time permits, she and her daughter enjoy quilting. Carol fondly looks back at all the great people and friends she has made along the way while working here. Next, Kadeen Shaw, Police Department, 15 years. Kadeen joined the Apopka Police Department on August 27, 2007, as a police officer. On February 27, 2018, she became a police detective and continues to serve in this position today. Born in the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago, Kadeen moved to Central Florida when she was six years old. She is a graduate of Apopka High School and received her Associate in Science degree in Criminal Justice from Seminole State College. Kadeen is also a certified firearms and first aid CPR instructor. When asked what her most notable achievement was, Kadeen responded that working her cases and providing a voice for the victims of domestic violence and child abuse is very important to her. Throughout her career, she has built a strong bond with her community while providing to be fair and impartial. This, along with many friendships she has built along the way, has made for a very fulfilling career. Outside of the station, Kadeen is married to her wife of 15 years and has twin boys. In addition, she has three sisters and a brother, as well as several nieces and nephews, all living locally. She feels that her family provides a strong foundation and a great sense of pride. They encourage her to be a better person each day. Next, Nathaniel Dominguez, Public Services Department, five years, in wastewater treatment plant. Nathaniel began working for the City of Apopka on September 18, 2017, as a wastewater plant operator C. On March 26, 2018, he was reclassified as an environmental specialist one, and on May 6, 2022, he was promoted to the environmental specialist two. He continues to serve there today. Nathaniel was born and raised right here in the Sunshine State. He attended the University of West Florida, where he earned his Bachelor of Science degree in marine biology. He also holds certifications in water operations Class A, Water Operations Class A, and industrial pretreatment B. One of the most notable work achievements was creating the Apopka Grease Gladiator Public Education Program. This program encourages residents to become a grease gladiator and take steps to prevent the harmful buildup of grease in our sewer system. When not, when not at work, Nathaniel enjoys spending time with his four beautiful children, his wonderful wife, and their two annoying cats. That's what he wrote. He fondly recalls when they brought their adopted children home from Bulgaria and how his coworkers had surprised him with toys and gifts for the children. This kind of gesture meant so much to him. I agree, cats are annoying, so. Samuel Maldonado, Public Services Department, five years. Samuel began working for the City of Apopka on July 17, 2017, as a ground specialist in Streets and Grounds Division. On March 20, 2022, he was transferred to utility plant maintenance as a maintenance worker two, where he serves today. And last is Wayne Zess, Public Service Department, five years in sanitation. Wayne began working for the City of Apopka on August 14, 2017, as a sanitation equipment operator. He continues to serve in this position today. And that is all of our individuals that are being recognized today, so we would like to get a picture, I believe, in the front.
And if the directors will come down as well.
It feels naked up here. No, it isn't, you know what I mean, it just...
All right, guys, good. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the Apopka City Council of October 5 to order. Commissioner Banksen, if you could give us the prayer, pledge, and invocation.
Sure.
Back to the day.
Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for this day, and we ask for your grace as we gather together and discuss the issues for our city and our community, Lord, that we ask for your wisdom. You said, "If you ask, if we ask wisdom, you'll give it liberally," and so we thank you for that, Lord. Let us have a good meeting this day, and we give you the praise in Jesus' name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On October 2, 1965, a team of scientists invent Gatorade, a sports drink to quench thirst in a University of Florida lab. The name Gatorade is derived from the nickname of the university's sports teams. Early in the summer of 1965, University of Florida assistant football coach Dwayne Douglas met with a group of scientists on campus to determine why many of the Florida players were so negatively affected by the heat. The scientists developed a drink that contained salts and sugars that could be absorbed more quickly, and the basis for Gatorade was formed.
We run out of... Yes. Okay, we've got three sets of minutes. I know we probably had a chance to look at those, another, it came a little later than we'd like, but anything that we, any additions? If not, look for a motion to approve three sets of minutes. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
I guess a second.
Second by Commissioner Blaskis, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, proclamation, Mobility Week. Let's see here. Nicole, you wanna come up and introduce? Come on up.
Hear me? Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Nicole Kennedy with the Community Development Department. This is just a proclamation for Mobility Week, FDOT's yearly celebration of mobility choices. We have here today Joe Santiago with the Florida Department of Transportation, as well as Puna Batataria with Mobility Week.
Great.
So kick it to you.
Well, thank y'all for coming, and I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. Do y'all wanna say anything? Or? If you, whatever you'd like, let me read the proclamation you think about, how about that? So the proclamation reads, "Whereas Mobility Week is a cooperative effort by the Florida Department of Transportation and its partner agencies to promote awareness of safe, multimodal transportation choices by hosting an annual collection of outreach events, and whereas Mobility Week is an ideal time for counties, cities, and transportation agencies to highlight achievements, introduce new initiatives, and implement new policies promoting sustainable transportation; and whereas Mobility Week is an opportunity for individuals to explore various transportation choices available and consider how multimodal transportation reduces traffic congestion, benefits the environment, and improves community health; and whereas Mobility Week is consistent with the City of Apopka's key priorities of pedestrian safety and healthy transportation options; and whereas the City of Apopka supports Mobility Week by hosting, participating, and transportation events such as the Apopka Wildlife Drive Eco Tourism Bike Ride this weekend. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, do here now proclaim the week of October 21 through the 28, 2022, as Mobility Week." Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Joe Santiago, I'm from the Florida Department of Transportation, and I just wanted to say thank you for the proclamation and for participating on Mobility Week with us. So, as you said, it was very well said in the proclamation, you know, Mobility Week is just a cooperative effort by the DOT to get agencies and cities and counties to participate in events and offer special promotions to encourage Floridians to try new modes of transportation and other transportation options. So, thank you so much, and we will be glad to see you on October 22.
Well, one of the nice things that we really appreciate, I know all the improvements we're making from central going north, DOT came in, a lot of those improvements on 441 are for pedestrian safety and vehicular safety as well, but, so, thanks to DOT for making that a top priority for, you know, not only the state, but certainly for here, for us here in Apopka. So thank you for all that you do to help us, help our constituents.
Thank you.
Okay. Next proclamation is a Cyber Security Awareness Month. For our friends there in the back who keep us safe and secure as far as our communications across the city, and I can tell you that Rob, Bob, and the whole team over there at IT put us out there, probably quarterly at least, they tried to trick us into picking up a phishing email, and they catch a few of us, and then we have to wrap their knuckles and tell them not to do that again, because we've had multiple cities, we even had a private business here in Apopka in the last several months that ended up paying $100,000, what was it? Rob, you told me it was $100?
I don't remember the exact cost.
I will say $140,000 to get their information back from a cyber hacker, and when they gave them half the information back and then got another $100,000 out of them. So it's $240,000, somebody right here in, a business right here in Apopka. So, so these guys really, they take care of us and make sure that, you know, we, as the city employees, are, sometimes it's a little frustrating now that we've got this multi-factor authen- authentication. I always get that one. And, but we appreciate it. So let me read that, and I'm gonna let Rob just say a few words as well. "Whereas the City of Apopka recognizes that a vital role in identifying, protecting its citizens from and responding to cyber threats that may have significant impact to our individuals and collective security and privacy, and whereas critical infrastructures sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems and technology to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems; and whereas the City of Apopka Information Technology Department provides a comprehensive approach to help enhance the security of this city, and whereas the Stop Think Connect campaign serves as the global online safety awareness campaign to help all digital citizens stay safe and secure online. This message was created by an unprecedented coalition of private companies, nonprofits, government organizations, as well as academic institutions working together to increase the understanding of cyber threats and empowering the American public to be safer and more secure online. And whereas the focus on four key behaviors, including enabling multi-factor authentication, using stronger passwords, and having a password manager, updating software, and recognizing and reporting phishing, and whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play, and awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of the City of Apopka's information, infrastructure, and economy. And whereas the federal government of the United States of America, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, the National Association of State Chief Informational Officers, and the National Cyber Security Alliance all recognize October as the National Cyber Security Awareness Month. And whereas the city desires to bring greater awareness around these issues to both city staff and the citizens of Apopka, now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim October 22, October 2022, as Cyber Security Awareness Month." And with that, Rob?
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing October for the cybersecurity awareness. As you mentioned, this is not just something for the IT department to deal with, this is going across the board for every user we have. We try to train all of our users, anybody who has an actual email account, that is, you know, the online threats that they're dealing with, as well as the email spoofing coming in. And truly, our biggest threat we deal with is somebody trying to impersonate another figure here and get away with something, or get some sort of credential from that individual. So we really try to push training to each of the users. I know it's sometimes trying to force it down their throat to get them to complete this on time, and we have to sometimes lock accounts out until they do finish the account, and of course, their managers don't like that, because they can't work, but I need to ensure that we're doing the best we can to make sure we are securing the network. So again, I thank you- So, again, I thank you for recognizing October, and everybody keep doing, excuse me, keep doing a good job.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it. I know you only got Bob in the back doing the... All right, next up, we've got a presentation, just want to, obviously, we've gone through Hurricane Ian, and I just want to kind of give you a kind of a quick snapshot of some of the things that we saw along the way. Let's see here. Where did he... He's coming? We good? Good. First, we'll start about with the pre-storm preparations. Just interesting, we're down there, I know Commissioner Nestor's down there filling some sandbags as my, along with me, we're down there just kind of checking out what was going on, as I just thought it was a cute picture, a couple of kids helping their mom and dad out fill some sandbags. We, just so you know, we had, we filled 22,000 sandbags, took 294 cubic yards of dirt to fill those bags. I reached out to Duke Energy a week or so, just when we knew it was probably heading our way, and said, "Hey, guys, if you need to stage some trucks, we've got the Northwest facility, as well as the Gillum Center parking lot for staging," and they took us up on the offer. We had probably a hundred trucks out at Northwest staged there to take care as soon as the storm ended, so thanks to Duke and thanks for the team, because obviously, they helped speed up the process without these outside helpers. Duke could have taken a long time to get us back up and running, so I want to thank Duke for that partnership we have with them. We also had some other things that, you know, kind of behind the scenes, nobody really sees, is that we had our fire department went out and visited all of our nursing homes to make sure that their generators were up and running, ready to go, in case power went down, and I think everything was kind of a go. So, we were prepared going into the storm, and as the storm hit, just to give you kind of some ideas, the rainfall levels that we can attribute to Orange County, Lake Apopka had 10.95 inches of rain, obviously, it could be a little higher, a little lower, depending on where you are. This is kind of just a graph, not very easy to see, but shows you kind of where the rainfall and the inches that were, that fell. Next up, I don't know if everybody knows that we take on reclaimed water from Altamont Springs and from San Lando, which is the Wakava area, and we had to get prepared for that, we had all of our fields running. We have the big Golden Jim Pond, and the picture with me is not very good, I was by myself, I just wanted to show you the level of the Golden Jim Pond, which is a 300 million gallon pond. We had plenty of room for storage there, the upper right corner pond is the secondary 50 million gallon pond that is, it's synced with the bigger 300 million gallon ponds. You can see there's plenty of room, we probably could have held another, I'm gonna just guess, 200 million gallons of water, so had plenty of storage. But what's interesting, if you look at the water flows coming, we were taking four and a half million gallons a day from Altamont Springs, we were taking almost three million gallons a day from San Lando, and we were able to take it on. They both had plant failures, and they ended up sending, I'm gonna say, hundreds of millions of gallons to the Wakava River. So, while there, you know, we were able to take on their water, just there's a point where they got inundated and couldn't, had to release to the river, so we were, we felt fortunate, we had all of our ducks in a row and were able to keep pressing forward. Just to give you some ideas on what Public Services did, and this was, obviously, it was a community effort, you had, you know, our police and fire were manning the EOC, you had Public Services taking care of all of our infrastructure, Parks and Rec, you know, helped out Public Services, and so it was a team effort across all departments, and couldn't be more proud of the team that was out there on, you know, the preparations leading up to the storm, and then after storm, you know, as we start to repair. So, we had, we have a total of 60 lift stations that went down due to power on Thursday at 2:00 PM. By 7:00 PM on that Thursday, same Thursday, we're down to 29. We had several major lift stations lose power, but all had generators to prevent overflows. Generators utilized, you can see, equipment we had that was damaged, the reclaim, we had four motors that went out, but we're making progress to get all those back up and running, but no loss of water, no loss of wastewater, so all of the facilities were handled the storm, and along with all of our folks that made that happen. So, one of the, I guess, the problem areas we have in the city that we've talked about for several years now, and that's the Border Lake slash Lake Page slash Lake Pleasant. This, just a picture before the storm, that was on Wednesday, you can see there's probably, oh, 18 inches to two feet of freeboard in that pond in front of Hobby Lobby. On the right picture out of my car window, the right lane going north on Piedmont, Wakava, was inundated with about four or five inches of water. Good news is, within 24 to 36 hours, it had all subsided, so the water now is back into the, into the pond there. Next up, Majestic Oaks, which is on the south side of Lake Page, just showing you a gentleman, that's his back porch, his feet, his ankle deep in water on his back porch, that found a little brim on his driveway in the front. The picture to the far right, I know it doesn't look like much, I was down in a manhole at the, we have a drainage well there by that leaves trees, the water was flowing perfectly fine out of Lake Page into the drainage wells, I think a 36-inch drainage well, so it was able to take a lot of water off, out of Lake Page, which decreased the level of flooding that could have happened at Majestic Oaks, as well as other neighborhoods in that general area. As we talk about that, the, you know, we look at what's the long-term solution, and we talk about, do we want to fix and add additional drainage wells, or do we want to pipe all of this additional water back to our treatment center there on Cleveland? And so, we're still working diligently with Orange County to figure out a long-term solution. Obviously, there was some minor flooding over off Lake Cortez, which is in the county, Seminole County obviously needs to come to the table to help us. And you can see the bottom left corner is the water after the storm, it was on Friday, so water was still going from the upper pond to the lower pond in the Majestic Oaks subdivision, but the gentleman's yard wasn't dry, but it was starting to subside the water there. Lake Hammer, we put the pump station out there to pump the excess water from Lake Hammer back to the plant on Cleveland. You can see where, the left one is where we are able to start pumping, we gotta wait till it gets to 79, never got much higher than a little over 79 feet, so even though we ran the pumps, we were in pretty good shape along the way at Sheeler Oaks, no major issues there at Sheeler Oaks. Clear Lake, obviously been a concern, this, the left one is showing the water level in Clear Lake before the storm, so it's about, so half foot, so six inches, probably four to five inches. The one on the right is the max, around the max of the lake, so it went up about eight inches or so, no more than that, six to eight inches, so fared fairly well there at Clear Lake. Clear Lake Estates subdivision, though we do want to, we're going, something we'll need to address as we move forward. The left picture is the pond that's before the storm, the one on the right is after the storm, but you can see the upper left corner, the blue shoes, that's the spillway. The spillway with that rain should not have had water going across the spillway from that Clear Lake Estates into Clear Lake. So, we've got some discussions we need to have with the Clear Lake folks as to how we address that issue. The ponds held right up until the end, but then they, when they got inundated, the water then went over the spillway. Clear Lake Landings, this shows you, they've got a stake in the ground next to the playground, kind of during the storm and after storm, it did rise a little bit after the storm, but you can see there's plenty of space between the lake level and where the houses are, probably a good four to five feet even at the height of the lake between the lake level and the Next up, Vista's on Water's Edge subdivision, this is the erosion from Addison Farms. Now, this erosion came about, this was prior to Hurricane Ian, and so we've got to go back and address that what's happened is, they had a lot of the silt from Addison Farms plug up the, these swales through vistas, and so they're gonna need to go back and take six or eight inches of topsoil out of each of those ponds or swales to, so that they will then operate efficiently in percolating the water through the swales. Clericola Resort, the old Yogi Bear Jellystone Park, another one, we had an issue with the new developer on the front there on Clericola Road, we knew there was a problem, and so they started to build a swale right on the property line, which would be the Westmost property line, swale didn't handle all the excess water. We had four or five trailers that, you know, obviously, the trailers were off the ground, so it never, I don't think it flooded the trailers, but definitely, they've got some work to do to get this back to a level where they can maintain all their water on site. One big pipe break there at Lake Avenue in Grostenbacher, I know we've got under our emergency contract to come in, and we're gonna have to do like we did at the Frank Carlton, come in and seal the inside of the corrugated pipe to take care of that, want to fix it for long-term, not just a short-term Band-Aid. The Windexe Downtown Site, I didn't have a picture during the storm, it's hard to stop anywhere along 436 or 441 to get out and get a picture, but a lot of sediment that crossed 436, 441, and went into the Martins Pond, so we've got some issues there we need to, we'll need to address longer term as well. So, just moving forward, you know, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council has, but the drop-off site, we opened up Sunday? Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday. So, we've, this was Saturday, already taking some debris from individuals that want to get their debris off their yards immediately. I know there's been some chatter out there about, we're not gonna pick up their hurricane debris, and yes, we are, it's not gonna be us, it'll be Crowder Gulf, but for a lot of people, I mean, it could be a week, 10 days, two weeks before it all gets, I think they've got a 30-day, right, 30-day contract to get it all done, but we want, you know, to have, if you've got really great St. Augustine grass, and you want to get it off and get it to debris site, you can take it out to Northwest off of Appy Lane if you want to get rid of it before Crowder Gulf comes in and removes it all. So, it will get removed by all the debris, we just ask that you separate anything from the debris, because the FEMA will not cover us for, you know, if you've got furniture or any other items in that pile that we take off. So, the last thing I know that's been brought up that, want to make sure, is the private gated neighborhoods, I know there's been some misinformation out there about that as well, just to let you know that they have the ability to have their debris moved up, it just has to be moved from their gated community to a city right away, so they could take it from inside their development right outside to a road, and we will be happy to pick it up. I know that Wakava Glen is, they're having their crew take it all the way out to the Northwest, but they don't even have to do that, so if you've got small gated communities, all they need to do is get it outside the gated piece, and we'll pick it up. I just ask that if you've got a lot inside of a gated community, that you don't put it out on the road, you know, so we've got, you know, now impassable roads again, so you might have to put it out a couple of times. I know Josh has had, it's not, you know, depending on neighborhoods, it'll be two or three passes, which means they'll come back until it's all completely done, so I think, no, I'm not gonna say I think, I know that our staff was, did an amazing job, I'm so proud of the whole team working together, I mean, every department out there doing their thing, making this happen, and I just wanted you, everybody to see, sorry, I put that, got two articles in front of you about all the problems, all the other municipalities, and just want you to know, not one of them mentions the City of Apopka, so thanks to all the staff for making that happen. Okay. Mr. Blaskis, anything I can answer for you?
No, there was just a lot of messaging, you're right, on social media, and I know that we had a lot of residents contact us, they just weren't quite sure about the storm debris pickup, but I think we got it right, and that there's one message out there, and I just want to say thank you to Josh, because he went over and above and personally contacted some of the residents to assure them, you know, about the storm pickup, so I, you know, you're right, it was just a lot of different chatter on social media, and there was a lot of confusion, but I think as of today, people realize that they have the ability to take and drop off the storm debris, and that we did contract someone that will be picking them up starting Monday.
Monday, yes.
And that it will get done, it will get done.
Mr. Bankson?
Only question was a follow-up.
Sorry.
Follow-up on the letter that Ed sent to all of us, and it shows four different sites there, is that?
Yeah.
Is it only the Northwest that's for the public to come to, or?
No, no, that's where Crowder is going, they've got one truck each day. Josh, why don't you come on down just real quick, please, sir? I think they'll have one claw truck in each of those divisions or...
Northwest Sandpiper.
Oh, there you are, Josh, I didn't see.
Cleveland.
How could I miss you, bud? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, Josh Robinson, Public Services. Yeah, the four, we're only activating the one Northwest site, if you're talking about the stars on the map. The very bottom one is Vista Landfill, which for V residents, can you use, and we also will use, depending on where we're collecting.
No, he's talking about the map with the four zones, the zones are for each claw, you have one claw truck per zone, is that...
One claw truck per zone is where we're gonna start.
Yeah, I was asking about that as far as the, you know, like Sandpiper debris site, Cleveland debris site, so this isn't where the public would take theirs?
No, the public only at Northwest.
Only at Northwest, I just wanted to clarify.
We didn't activate any of the other sites, just Northwest, that, yeah. Yeah, those should be and will be taken off that map, but that's what we had for last year.
Because FEMA has some real strict, you know, regulations. Not only you have, Crowder Gulf is the company that we've contracted with to get the debris removed, but they also have an auditor to audit Crowder Gulf to make sure that, because they get paid by the cubic yard of debris. So it's a, it's a pretty...
Yeah, it's a process. But we did good last, during Hurricane Irma, and we got 90% of over $2 million worth of expense back, so, yeah. They did good, so.
Well, stay right there. Commissioner Smith?
I don't have any real questions. I too, when I was doing the hurricane, and I must say that I saw several of our Public Works individuals out working, even one during the storm was at the pump in Sheila Oaks in the middle of the storm, making sure that that pump was operating properly to get that water out of there. So very proud of the work of our Public Works Department.
Yeah, Jorge's not here, but him and his crew, they worked from, yeah, all throughout the storm, all the way through that next day, keeping the lift stations going, responding to clearing roads, whatever needed to be done. He had people there available for it, so.
Yes, and appreciated. I even sent in a picture of a limb that was across one of our roadways in Rock Springs Ridge, and immediately there was someone there to remove that debris as well. So thank you for your work.
Mr. Nesta?
Yeah, so I was similar to piggyback on what Mayor Nelson was saying, is that I was out there putting a lot of bags together and lots of sand and all that, being able to talk to some of our staff, and they were, not by any means looking forward to it, but they liked the challenge that kind of comes with problem solving through a hurricane. So it was really cool. You've instilled that kind of culture of not to be scared, not to, you know, be, they're looking forward to the challenge and being able to take care of our citizens. So that was really cool to see. The only main concern I have is we do have quite a few smaller gated communities. So, you know, I'm going to use like Alexandria Place as an example. Where, if they're going to drag their stuff to the front, there's not really a spot unless we're blocking sidewalks, which is a problem with everyone going to school. So like, I guess it's a long-term, you know, Bluegrass Estates is another one. Where do they put theirs? Because I'm sure they've got quite a bit. So I don't know.
You know, actually, I drove through most of the gated communities. To be honest, most of them don't have anything to worry about. Wakava Glen, because of their canopy, they got like a bomb went off in there. So he had to get it out in any kind of reasonable time. They had to hire someone. But the, really, the, most of the others, the main thing will just be the wait until we get there. Because most of them that I saw, there was no more than four cubic yards, which is our normal pickup limit.
Sure.
And it's just that we've got a limited time to get the city maintained right of ways clear, so we can get that reimbursement. So that storm debris in theirs, we'll get it, and there won't be a charge, but it's going to have to wait until we get the...
So it's not an absolute no, we're not picking it up? It's just give it a little time?
It's going to get picked up. It's just not going to be the first ones to get picked up.
Understood. Just wanted to clarify that.
So that's why we provided the other alternatives. If they didn't want it to sit until the end of the cleanup, they could get it to the right of way or to the sites and get it off quicker.
Understood.
We'll get to it. We'll get to all of them.
Perfect. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Thank you, Josh, appreciate it. Thanks to the team out there that made this happen. It was, it was impressive. It really was. All right. Edward, on the agenda, anything to...
No changes, Mayor.
No changes. All right. All right. Public Works, Susan?
Dennis New.
I want to cover real quick. I wanted to spend a whole four minutes on that packet I just handed you, but I'm not going to, I'm going to synopse because I've got a more important issue to cover. The property that used to belong to the Conleys now belongs to the city that I've been telling you all about the grass in the backyard for months and months and months. Well, the other day I went by there, there's a young man mowing the grass. No city truck, no city mower, so I stopped to ask him. He's just a concerned neighbor, got tired of the grass being so tall, so he was in there trying to cut it with his mower. He cut everything he could. And I got thinking about it, and I thought, you know, maybe the grounds department's so busy they can't cut it, and maybe that's why the code enforcement people haven't done anything with code enforcement on city structures. So I wrote that packet up for you guys quoting city structures and the codes that cover them. Nowhere in the codes does it say the mayor or the city manager or anybody's responsible for it. Everywhere it quotes the city council. So I'm giving those to y'all on the record, so the city council is now aware of code violations on property owned by the city of Apopka. I want to talk to you about something else that I changed my mind on Monday. Monday, I got a call from a friend of mine that I spent 30 years in the fire department with, whose mom lives here in the city limits, concerned about his 78-year-old mother because she wasn't answering the phone. So I got in a truck and I drove to their house, and I found her out in the front yard with a little handsaw, cutting up limbs to put them in the back of her Toyota Corolla trunk, so she could take them to the Northwest Recreation Facility. And I asked her, what are you doing? And she said, well, the city webpage and Facebook says you got to bag it, can it, or cut it up and deliver it yourself to Jason Dwelling. And I thought, no way. After every storm, there's contractors. Where did you see it at? So she told me, so I looked at it, and I became infuriated. The reason I became infuriated is because after 35 years in the fire service, I still have contacts within FEMA. I have contacts in state emergency services. Every city, every municipality, every public entity has a communications liaison between state and federal government emergency services. Does this city have one? I think it's the fire chief, isn't it? Is the liaison between here and FEMA? That's a question. Anybody can answer it. Do you know who that is? No. On September 30th, FEMA put out a notice to states, counties, and municipalities saying, and Orange County was included, and we're part of Orange County, that debris recovery would be covered with reimbursement on September 30th. On Monday, on the city webpage, the first posting is still there, and on the mayor's page, it says you can bag it, can it, or take it to the Northwest Recreation Facility. So here's a 78-year-old woman out front because she was told, what she read, and she's trying to cut up these limbs. She's got blisters on her hands and her fingers are bleeding from cutting up these limbs. I took her inside and cleaned up her hands, and I put all the stuff out of her car at the curbside and assured her that it would be picked up by the city. The next day, the message got corrected, oh, there's a contractor. So we either got a communication problem in the way we're putting out notices to people, or we have a communication problem between whoever is supposed to be our FEMA liaison, I believe it's the fire chief, and the mayor, so that the mayor could put out honest, upfront, and complete information. If it is the fire chief, this would be another blunder and a line of blunders, including the death of the young man, the training of the firefighters, fighting for pay for them. We're trying to hire firefighters, and you can go right down the road here to Amscott and get a job at $15 an hour with no training. There's my red light. I know, I'm done. Everybody else gets six, eight minutes, but I'm done. Read that packet, please. As a taxpayer, I'd like the city to... Who's next, Susan?
Venus Griffith.
Yeah.
I live in Clear Lake Estates subdivision. My address is 2428 Wyndham Bay Place, Apopka. I want to say at first, thank you, Commissioner Doug, for coming out to my house three times before and after, and yesterday, to see if we were okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Nelson. I called you somebody else before. But Mayor Nelson, you did come out to the house, and you wanted to see how high the lake has gotten, and I appreciate that. And Commissioner Nick, you did come out and you did the best you could as far as everything else, and I did get bags. I got 10 bags delivered to my home. Thank you very much for coming out to see about us. Well, since then, of course, everybody know that we had a horrific hurricane. This was a wind and rain gustler. And I have been in New York and Florida, I have never seen anything like this before in my life. So it was really horrific. I did not know if I would have a house flooded or not, but thank God, my house is fine. But we do have flooding there in Clear Lake Estates. Now, I wanted to find out, because Mayor, you said something earlier about reclaimed water and the pumps, and you said it comes from, you get reclaimed water from Altamont Springs? Okay. I want to know, how come you're doing that for Altamont Springs and Clear Lake still has an issue?
Well, they paid for it, so.
I'm sorry?
They paid for the pipe.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
They paid for the pipe.
Oh, okay, so we pay for it without taxes, right?
No, 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 Altamont.
Altamont. So that means if I pay personally you all to come and pump the water out of Clear Lake, is that possible?
Oof, I don't even know where the, it'd be, you had to go to Stormwater, I don't even know what the potential would be.
Okay. Well, I heard that we do have, we might have a solution. I think Commissioner Doug was talking about it on yesterday, because we cannot survive five hurricanes out there. If we get another one, I'm leaving Apopka, because I will not have a house, and I will not tolerate that at all. That's, I mean, that's ridiculous for someone to say that, Mr. Earp. And I have increasing mosquitoes out there, increasing alligators out there, snakes, and blind mosquitoes. I had never had blind mosquitoes before until this week. So I'm looking for a solution. I'm looking for a long-term solution out there, so I can say, yes, I can go out and see the sunset again and relax. I'm retired, my husband is retired, we like to enjoy that home. I would like for my grandson to go out and play in the park. He figures that's his park because it's so close to my house, but it's underwater. I need a long-term solution. You guys got to tell me if Mr. Earp doesn't have an answer to it. We need to outsource this. There are professional people out there that can help us. I have names, I have phone numbers that would be happy to give us a long-term solution. I don't know, if you can pump that water out, there is another, two storms out there that the meteorologist is looking at. So I would like to know what you guys are going to do about this.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I think we have one more, Rod. Mr. Olsman.
Mr. EOC. Couldn't...
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. Mayor Commissioners, thank you for all you do, and I know that when I was filling my sandbags, we saw Nick digging and shoveling, and I saw the mayor as well. So at any rate, I thought I heard your voice, Mayor, and I turned around, by golly, you had a shovel in your hand. At any rate, with Hurricane Ian, I think overall, just a wonderful, I had experience that I've, most people don't have. I was a volunteer for the CERT program. I was a station one from 8:00 AM Wednesday morning until 6:00 PM Thursday afternoon, taking, handling, working with dispatchers, handling non-emergency calls. The room, the whole area entry, if you've not been in it, was wall-to-wall inflatable beds and cots. Literally, the dispatchers had to climb over some of the beds to get to their bed. The situation was not the most pleasant, but they made the best of it. It was awesome. And the concern that they have and the true teamwork was just awesome to have, and I think it's important. I know everyone's talked about it, but it was really great to see from the inside. Couple other things along the way I want to cover. National Night Out, we appreciate that Silver Oaks subdivision, at the last moment, picked up and ran with it. It was a wonderful event. Troy and Jennifer from the association, along with Jason Wiggins, their own Jason Wiggins, coordinated, pulled it off. It was an awesome experience, and I saw all of you there, and new commissioner, again, or re-commissioner Becker there, too, was a wonderful evening, wonderful event. I'm going to talk a little bit, too, about growth in infrastructure. It's important that we look at all departments. I think that sometimes in the budgeting process, we don't look. We are the fastest-growing city in Orange County, and we need to get in front of it, not Band-Aid, pick a staff, let's go, and let's add this now. We need to look ahead. As I beat you up about schools and getting in front of schools, and I will be back on that subject, we need to look at every department. What do we need? What do we need in traffic? What do we need in develop in order to stay in front of this development? I think we're lacking in some of those areas, and I think we need to look at it more closely. City departments, I think that we have the fact of the day that we do. Maybe we ought to have the department of the month and give people an opportunity to understand what each department's for, maybe on the website, who to call for what, because sometimes it's confusing. You call one number, you get transferred, and it will never be a perfect science, but I think that's an opportunity we can look at. It's a shame that we do employ recognition before the meeting. I know it was on the agenda, in the agenda, I think it's important the community can look at and say, my gosh, we've got people five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years, 30 years of service. It's an awesome accomplishment, and the recognition needs to be beyond Band-Aid at the front of the meeting, again, just from an observation. I appreciate all you do. I want to thank you again for that. Saturday Sounds is back on, and it was a wonderful evening, and I would just wish you the best of luck, and if anything I can do to help you out along the way, let me know.
Thank you, Rod. Okay. All right. Next up, consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of the items? We got, how many do we have? Six? Six items on the consent agenda? If not, look for motion to approve the consent, the six consent agenda items.
The only thing, number four, authorize execution of piggy bank contracts for fiscal year 2023. Did we list which contracts they were?
Yes. The African Commissioner wrote it on a form. Let me find it.
I saw, oh, is that the one with just Mullenex?
Yeah, Mullenex is on that one.
Were there more?
Mullenex is 22.
Oh, there it is. I'm sorry, you know what? It just kept going on Mullenex.
23, correct.
So RMS Contractors, Brightview Landscape.
No, that's your piggy backs. Keep going.
And Allied Universal Corporation.
That's your piggy backs.
Yeah, that's what she was asking about.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If nobody wants to pull any, can I get a motion to approve the six consent agenda items?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Blaskis. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Alterna Logistical Park, Jean Sanchez.
Good afternoon, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the Alterna Logistics Park Major Development Plan. The subject property is west of US 441 and Apopka Airport Road and almost 73 acres in size. Based on the aerial, it is south adjacent of the airport and surrounded by industrial uses. The Alterna Logistics Park Major Development Plan proposes the development of an industrial center with three buildings for warehouse and distribution uses, as well as trailer parking and approximately 72 acres. Building 100, the building nearest Apopka Airport Road, will have approximately 154,000 square feet of area. Building 200 will have 300,000 square feet, and Building 300 will have 120,000 square feet of area for a total of 574,000 square feet of industrial uses. While 287 parking spaces are required, the applicant is proposing a total of 430 parking spaces with 19 accessible spaces. The maximum permitted height is 50 feet. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to approve the Alterna Logistics Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve the major development plan for Alterna Logistics Park.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Apopka Business Center, Major Development Plan.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the Apopka Business Center Major Development Plan. The property is located on the southwest corner of Hermit Smith Road and General Electric Road. Based on the aerial, it is west of the current site of Amazon Warehouse and surrounded by industrial uses as well. The Apopka Business Center Major Development Plan proposes the development of an industrial center with three buildings for warehouse and distribution uses as well as trailer parking on approximately 79 acres. Warehouse Buildings 100 and 200, adjacent to Hermit Smith Road, will have approximately 266,900 square feet of area. Warehouse 300 is proposed to have 443,100 square feet for warehouse and distribution uses. While 144 parking spaces are required, the applicant is proposing a total of 520 parking spaces with 19 accessible spaces as well. The proposed maximum building height is 38 feet, and the maximum permitted height is 45. The applicant also details proposed open space on many areas that surpass the 5% requirement by code. McKay Lake, situated in the center of the project site and Hermit Lake, on the southeastern portion, are mantised with paths surrounding the lake areas. The DRC and Planning Commission recommend approval. The recommended motion is to approve the Apopka Business Center Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
Is this going to be owner-user?
I'm sorry?
Is it going to be owner-user?
We have asked who the user is. We haven't been told who the end user is for this space.
Can, the other question is, I see, are those three separate lakes? Or do they feed into each other? Once you start having development, you know, we don't want to have the same problem we're having when we're building around lakes.
I'll let the engineers answer that question.
We got, let's let the applicant, Richard, let him first. You just be there for backup, please. How about that? We made you get up. We didn't... I'm sure Diane Velasquez knew that you were on crutches, so she...
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Alex Malecki from, I'm with Langan Engineering, civil engineering on the project. The three proposed lakes, the two on the west side are interconnected. It's a pretreatment lake going to a wet pond that then discharges to Lake Apopka. The one on the proposed lake on the east side is a standalone lake that will treat the water going into it and has an emergency spillway into two existing lakes on the site. The two existing lakes are closed basins. They do not connect to Lake Apopka.
Okay. In layman's terms?
The two lakes, the two ponds that we're proposing are connected to Lake Apopka. And they will discharge water there.
Jean.
Clicker.
Yeah.
These two proposed ponds are connected together and then discharge water to Lake Apopka. The proposed pond right here is a standalone pond that will treat the water and retain the water from the northeast portion of the site. It has an emergency spillway into the two existing lakes on the site. Those are closed basins and do not discharge to Lake Apopka.
So these two do not discharge into Lake Apopka?
This lake and this lake just stage up and stay, the water stays on the site.
So you will, that will be able to control the water from overflowing or during rainstorms?
Well, these three lakes will take care of that. These are existing lakes that are there now, and they will function the same way that they do now in pre-development condition.
Okay. Only because, you know, we seem to be having some issues with our rainfall and existing lakes and overflowing and...
I understand.
With a development this big, I just want to make sure that it doesn't become a problem in the future for us.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
My question, as you said, the three ponds that you're going to build will discharge into Lake Apopka. And that's legal?
Oh, in existing, so, in the existing condition, without any of this being developed, the site, the existing grading is such that stormwater runoff flows southwest towards Lake Apopka, and the northeast portion flows into the two existing lakes. In the proposed condition, we designed the new ponds to mimic the existing condition. So we are meeting the stormwater criteria for both City of Apopka and the Water Management District. So we are not exceeding the discharge, the amount of water discharged into Lake, the peak discharge or going to Lake Apopka, we're meeting the existing condition. So it is legal.
Richard, would you like to add to that? I don't quite understand what he's trying to explain. I mean, I get it, but...
So you're containing the runoff by producing the three extra ponds?
Correct.
And the two that were natural will do what they've always done?
Correct.
Yeah.
And we're not worried about, like, the impermeability of our development? That that's going to somehow make this issue worse at all? Not that there's an issue yet, but we clearly are having an issue throughout the city with this, so.
Right, and the three ponds that we're proposing are designed to handle it.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve the major development plan for the Apopka Business Center.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Ordinance number 2960.
Ordinance number 2960. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting the 2021, 2022 through 2027, 2028 five-year capital improvement annual update, providing for legislative findings, providing for exclusion from codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Any changes, Radley? No changes, Mayor. No changes, okay. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on that matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2960.
Before we do that, I just want to discuss this real quick. Do we have an updated timeline for the ADA Park Meeting that we were going to redo?
Right. Thank you for bringing me with that.
Hi, Commissioners. We have not set that meeting yet. We were thinking sometime, possibly in December, before the holidays.
Okay. I'm a stickler to date, so I'll be...
We will get a date, and we will make sure you get it. And obviously, we're going to really push it hard to make sure we get the turnout necessary for...
Well, that helps us, too, because then we can all push it out through our avenues as well, so.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Radley. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2960.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2955.
Ordinance number 2955. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use amendment of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city mixed use for certain real property generally located north of Keane Road and east of Okoye Apopka Road, owned by Ronnie B. Phillips and Wanda R. Phillips, comprising of 5.71 acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Jean?
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the small-scale future land use amendment request for 2309 Okoye Apopka Road. The property is approximately 5.7 acres, situated on north of Keane Road and east of Okoye Apopka Road. The applicant intends to construct a mixed-use development, and the future land use designation of mixed use is consistent with some other parcels in the vicinity that also have the same future land use designation. DRC and Planning Commission recommend approval, and the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2955 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on October 19, 2022. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
I had one. I know it's supposed to be an age-restricted development, correct?
That is the speculation, sir, yes.
Okay. Should, let's say that they switch to market rate. What's that process look like? Do they come back to us for additional approvals? Or is it they can just switch that and it's no problem?
It's being, the planned development, I'm sorry, the zoning portion of this that includes this parcel is still being reviewed by DRC. So we'll make, I'll go ahead and let the attorney answer that question.
Jonathan Hules, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando, applicant on this project. So this is just one component of other properties being assembled for a mixed-use project. Right now, there is a PD application that's been submitted that will take the entire project through PD. And through that PD process, it will specify that the residential component will be age-restricted senior housing. So it will lock it in at that point. And if, in the future, that doesn't get developed or there's another concept that wants to be, that the developer wants to build there, they'd have to come back through and amend the PD, which goes back through staff review, Planning Commission, City Council. But it'll be locked in in terms of use when that PD comes before you. It's still under review by staff.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jonathan?
Yes. Will the applicant also donate 50 acres of that front right away with that little narrow strip I see going out there for the widening of the road?
The Okoye Apopka frontage? Yes. So part, it is understood that as part of the PD and the PD agreement and the transportation aspects of it, whether it's standalone or incorporated in the PD agreement, will require not only this parcel, but the other parcels as part of the project being conveying the 30 feet of frontage for the future improvement of Okoye Apopka Road.
That was very smooth. You changed from 50 to 30.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if it was ever 50.
Thank you.
Sorry if I misheard you. 30 is what I heard.
All right. Any other questions for Jonathan? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Come on.
Just have a quick question. Can you say?
No, you did come down here to give your name and address for the record.
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street. This is part of a bigger project that you're planning?
It is.
Okay, let me ask you a question. This is a landlocked lake. This is a rehabilitation center. What's your plan for the outflow of all the water? We're having flooding everywhere else because we're building on landlocked lakes and diverting the water to them. But what's your plan for handling the runoff?
So what I would say is that this is the map change aspect of it. We're not at the engineering design, which will go through a different review process, a more thorough review process, where all of those design requirements will have to be shown to be met and developed.
How much of the other property, other than the five acres?
It's, 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 it's... Yeah, which is the laser at the top?
I don't, it leads us to the...
Okay, it's this property, this property, and this property. And it will be required to keep its stormwater on-site to attenuate it, to treat it before it can be released off-site. And the requirements by both the city and Mr. Ert here, I'm just, I'm an attorney, not an engineer, but the requirements is that it cannot discharge more than its current condition.
But the past history has been, in developments like this, where they've put retention ponds, the retention pond then discharges onto the private property next door. And we need to prevent that. This is, this is a bunch of old folks in a rehabilitation center. And as the water comes up, it creates a focal point of emergency evacuation concern to get the people out of there.
What, I would just say the good news is that there's many steps to go through before we're even considering that issue. And those are all part of a public hearing process. So if you're interested, you'll be able to come and monitor that.
Yeah, I'm going to follow along because I've seen the water from these lakes all the way up on 437A.
Okay, understood. And part of Okoye Apopka Road is part of the conversation as well.
And that was before a lot of the construction went on out here, including the rehabilitation center and these developments over here. Now, I've seen the water across the road. It'll come again.
Understood. And what I don't have for you is what the specific stormwater design is for this project. It may not even go into that way.
I'll pay attention to it because the city's past history, like with Lake Noah Estates, their retention pond discharges directly on the private property. And that's against the law, if I understand the law correctly. So I'll be paying attention.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on this issue? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2955 at first reading and hold over for second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2961.
Ordinance number 2961. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from commercial to residential medium for certain real property generally located in the northwest corner of Michael Gladden Boulevard and Washington Avenue, owned by Chester Leon Simmons and Deborah Simmons, comprising 0.56 acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the future land use amendment for Simmons' property from commercial to residential medium. The property is located at 828 South Washington Avenue, approximately 0.56 acres in size. The proposed future land use designation of residential medium is compatible with the parcels located northwest of the subject property. Property is currently within the MUD, Mixed Use Downtown Zoning District, which is also consistent with the requested future land use designation. The DRC and Planning Commission recommend approval. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2961 and hold it over for second reading and adoption October 19, 2022. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
What are the future plans for this one? Tentative plans?
The future plan, as we understand it, is to build townhomes. Is it townhomes?
Why don't you, why don't you come on up?
I guess it's changed.
I was gonna say, it said in the packet, four residential homes.
I'm sorry, the previous.
Let, let's, let the applicant, yep, come on up.
Mr. Simmons?
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Chester Simmons, and I'm owner, the owner of the property on 828 South Washington. And we initially bought the property as a commercial property to put a church, and Lord knows, Apopka has enough churches. So we, we also found out that we could not build a church there. So we're trying to get the property zoned so we can put low income houses to match the existing community around the property, the, the existing property that we brought.
Now, is this gonna be single family as in owners, or is this gonna be rentals? This, this, are you not sure yet?
We're just gonna sell them so we can try to find more land to build our church in a more, a better place.
Okay. So in, they will be detached homes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool, tell everyone to know. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Appreciate it. We definitely need more housing, special affordable housing, so appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2961 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2962.
Ordinance number 2962. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, and assigning interchange employment, village center, and transition, transition overlay districts for certain real property located on the southwest corner of State Road 429 and Kelly Park Road, comprising 259 acres more or less, and owned by Kelly Park BB Development LLC, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the change of zoning for Kelly Park crossings from T Transitional to KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, assignment of interchange employment, village center, and transition overlay districts and its accompanying master plan. The subject properties are located on the southwest corner of State Road 429 and Kelly Park Road, and within the one mile radius of the interchange of Wakava Parkway and Kelly Park Road. Properties currently have a future land use designation of mixed use. There's also currently Zone T Transitional. The applicant is requesting approval of the accompanying master plan as well. He's, they are proposing the location of the four overlay districts slightly vary from the overlap map and the code as shown on the master plan. And based on the KPI Form Based Code, boundaries of overlay districts are not defined and conceptual. Master plan also shows approximate access point connections, however, finite details of specific uses, site layouts, and access points will be provided at the time of major development plan process. Minor revisions to the character zone boundaries are defined in the Form Based Code as those where the boundary line is shifted by less than 300 feet and/or the expansion of a character overlay zone by less than five acres. The master plan details a conceptual plan for a mix of commercial, industrial, and residential uses. The DRC recommends approval, and at its meeting on September 13th, 2022, on a four to one vote, Planning Commission recommended to approve the proposed change of zoning, assignment of the overlay districts, as well as the master plan based on the findings and facts presented in staff report. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2962 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on October 19th, 2022. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Questions for Jean?
Well, first I want to kind of disclose that we did, I, I know I did. I sat with the attorney, Mr. Jonathan Hughes, yesterday, or I think it was yesterday or Monday. And we did discuss this project. And I did forward an email to him today to ask him about a pond on the site plan. And he did respond and said that that was being considered. So if he can come up and just kind of reiterate some of the conversation that we had with him, I don't know if he met with other commissioners, but he certainly met with me.
Uh, yes, certainly, Commissioner Velasquez. During, when, when we met, we kind of went over most of the things that Jean had already covered, and a follow-up email about a proposed pond potentially being cited on the site stormwater pond in terms of the, the Kelly Park Road widening that is forthcoming and understood to be forthcoming as part of the, the, the development of this area, consistent with the Kelly Park Form Based Code. And, and, and my response was what that's being worked on as we speak, along with other utility and infrastructure items with city staff, Pam Richmond being the point of contact from the city in terms of the transportation aspects. And we've turned a development agreement with staff, one turn. It probably needs another, and potentially maybe one more, before it's ready to come forward to city council. But, you know, I think what's understood is this is a big 259 acre project. It's gonna be multi-phased. This is the step that's required to even get to that more finite design that's gonna be required, because right now it's transitional zoning. It has a mixed use, future land use. The only zoning designation it fits into pursuant to the city's code is what's being proposed here today. So what, what I would say, Commissioner, is we need the zoning to move forward and have those and finalize those discussions, which will become before you. And it's understood what your expectation is, and I appreciate you expressing it to us. And we're gonna, we're still working with Pam to see how that fits into the overall project. In order to make the, even the minimum yields of what's required by the code, which is the, you know, this most intensive zoning districts within the Kelly Park Form Based Code, they're, they're found in this project. So we're trying to work that all through. I would say stay tuned because we're not quite there yet in, in finalizing those discussions.
Okay. It was just important that I did bring that up and not be surprised that.
And it's duly noted by our team.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions for the applicant? Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I did have a meeting as well, and then followed up, asked questions of Pam concerning the roadways. I'm, you know, I'm excited to see things move forward and the possibility of seeing what this will hold, restaurants, things that people want to see, so.
A whole lot of those.
Side of the possibilities.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, yes, I met Mr. Hughes as well. Uh, and I do have one question, I guess, as to Jean, maybe. Uh, I remember at one of our previous meetings, that phrase that's in our ordinance that says with bonuses, that allows developers to increase their little capacity, I thought we were moving that phrase.
We only remove the section of the transfer of density rights section under that bonus. There was a transfer of density rights for pocket parks that is dedicated to the public. Um, and we disallowed that with our previous glitch amendment to the Land Development Code. But there are still, I think, two or three other opportunities for bonus densities on the, on the Form Based Code. And it has to do, one of them for sure that I can recall, has to do with specific uses and parking lots and things like that, that they can, they can develop on top of, above and beyond what's required.
So in other words, it's still there for those that, that their projects in before that was?
Correct. There's still opportunities in the Form Based Code for, for bonus densities. However, the option to have one for, you know, dedicating a pocket park is no longer there.
That one is gone.
That one, yes, that one was stricken.
All right.
Mr. Nesta?
So I know the Planning Commission, we had one, it wasn't unanimous. Are you able to just to speak to why?
Yes. It was one of the planning commissioners that voted against it. It was mostly because of the transportation portion that has to do, transportation concerns about Golden Gem Road. If you want Pam to elaborate, I'm happy to give that factor. I can play transportation planner if you want.
That's not throwing her a bone.
No, no, no.
That's throwing her to the bus.
No!
And, and Pam, it's not necessarily, I, I mean, you're more than welcome to talk, but, and speak about this, obviously, but we've discussed this in, in detail. And so i- it was more of a topic that I wanted to bring up of, that, in that specific commission meeting, it was a, a topic of, do we just stop construction and development altogether on this road until we get our infrastructure in place? And I don't think that's appropriate or fair for the other landowners in the area that we created this higher density KPI that allowed for this. And, and at this point, I know that we are working in conjunction directly with Orange County, often you guys do on every single project. So it's not a, I don't want, I think it's inappropriate to start turning down projects because our, our infrastructure may not be there then, but it is being planned. So I just wanted to kind of make that comment to the commissioners up here, see what you guys feel is appropriate or not appropriate. And again, you know, we're looking at a 10, 15, 20-year horizon on this. So being able to have everything built out completely, we have that other, not on this, well, on this map, it'd be bottom left, but on the northwest corner, there's another huge development going up there. So the infrastructure is going to be in place, and it's planned, it's just gonna take time, and I don't want to shut down projects when that is the plan. So I just, Golden Gem is gonna be developed, it already is being developed, and I just want to make sure that we're on the same page of understanding that the infrastructure's gonna be coming. It just takes time, and I don't think we should hurt the homeowners in this area or landowners when their property values are there.
Yeah, that, that was the same question, concern I had, and I got that resolved in my questions.
Okay, all right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2962 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. So. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2963.
Ordinance number 2963. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from residential low suburban to commercial for certain real property generally located at the southwest corner of Poncan Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, owned by Poncan Road Property LLC, comprising of 14.95 acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Roxanne?
Roxanne Reed with the Planning and Zoning Division. Uh, the request is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2963. Uh, this property is located on the southwest corner of Poncan Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, 14.95 acres. The existing future land use is residential low suburban, and they are requesting to change that land use to commercial. And they have submitted an application to rezone the property that will be heard the next case.
Any questions for Roxanne?
What, do we have the specifics on what the plans are?
Oh, I was just gonna add the same thing.
You want to know what's going to happen on the, on the property?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna leave that to the applicant. I'm hoping the applicant is here and he can answer those questions.
Perfect.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jamie Albino, South 189 Orange Avenue. Right now, there are no set plans for the property. There's been discussions of looking at doing a gas station potentially right on the corner there. Um, there's definitely some interest in some commercial, and there's also been some interest in possibly doing a school. Uh, but there's no set tenants or, or use is set this time.
But, but you're saying a warehouse is gonna be built there?
Uh, I, I do not see.
No, wait, what are you, vacant warehouse central? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at that. So you're proposing just changing it to commercial?
Correct, yes. From residential low suburban to commercial.
Residential low suburban.
Do we know, and this is more of a, a question for staff, do we, this is supposed to be a, a kind of a commercial corridor or intersection supposedly?
That's what we're looking at in this area. We're, we're looking at all of this becoming commercial at some point.
So we're gonna have similar, this will match what's around it in the next few years, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other question?
I just have one for the developer. Was it intentional that you spelled Poncan Road property is different than the road? Or is that an error?
Uh, I can't speak, that's the property owner, and I couldn't speak to the history of the naming of that, so.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2963 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2964.
Ordinance number 2964. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District and Ag Agricultural District to CC Community Commercial for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Poncan Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, comprising of 14.95 acres more or less, and owned by Poncan Property Road LLC, property, Poncan Road Property LLC, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Sam?
Roxanne Reed again with the Planning and Zoning Division. The request is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2964. This is the property just previously talked about. The existing zoning is transitional and agriculture, and they are requesting to become CC, which is community commercial. And the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have both recommended approval, and the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2964, and hold it over for second reading and adoption on October 19th, 2022.
Any questions for Roxanne?
I, yeah, sorry. On, on this one, so, and this may be more for Pam, are we, we take a, a 30-foot right away, correct? Is it only on Plymouth Sorento, or are we doing it on Poncan as well?
I think on this one, we're taking on Poncan too, because the county has some future interests in widening. And what I will tell you, just, Orange County has seen this. It was the, I sent it to them when they came in and talked about concepts, because what we're going to avoid here is another Rock Springs Road in Welch. And when they kind of tossed out that they might want to do a gas station on that corner parcel, they already know what their restrictions for access are gonna be. And Orange County and I are working on to make sure that we don't repeat mistakes that were done by those, the county before us.
Perfect.
So.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Not, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2964 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2965.
Ordinance number 2965. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from agricultural to commercial for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Lester Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, owned by Kathy Unhili Chong and Yuna Amy Chong, comprising 5.86 acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Roxanne?
This is Roxanne Reed with Planning and Zoning Division. The request is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2965. This property is 5.86 acres, located on the southeast corner of Lester Road and Plymouth Sorento Road. It is currently agriculture, future land use, and they are requesting commercial to be compatible with the area that you see here. And Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have both recommended approval, and the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2965 and hold it over for the second reading and adoption on October 19th, 2022.
Any questions for Roxanne?
What, what's the plan on this one?
I'm gonna let the applicant speak to that.
Hi, Emily Brown, 3333 South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida. So we, I don't know if we can go back. So our clients owned the north property between this one and Lester Road.
The daycare, or soon to be daycare?
Uh, part of it.
Okay.
Yes. We do not have any immediate plans for development, but it would be under the same ownership then.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2965 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2966.
Ordinance number 2966. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from Ag Agricultural District to CC Community Commercial for certain real property generally located on the southeast corner of Lester Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, comprising 5.86 acres more or less, and owned by Kathy Unhuli Chong and Yuni Amy Chong, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Roxanne Reed again with the Planning and Zoning Division, and the request is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2966. This property is located on the southeast corner of Lester Road and Plymouth, Plymouth Sorento Road, 5.86 acres, currently zoned agriculture, a companion case with the previous one. They are asking for community commercial zoning district. And as you can see, the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission both recommended approval, and the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2966 and hold it over for the second reading and adoption on October 19th, 2022.
Any questions for Roxanne? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2966 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2968.
Ordinance number 2968. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending ordinance number 2449, which is known as the Mullinex Board Planned Development PD, generally located north of State Road 436 and the east of Roger Williams Road, comprising 21.51 acres more or less, owned by Mullinex Board of Central Florida, Inc., providing for directions to the Community providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the amendment to ordinance number 2449, Mullenex Ford PUD and Master Plan. The property is located north of State Road 436 and east of Roger Williams Road. Currently has a future land use designation of commercial. The original PD master plan was adopted on January 2nd, 2003 through ordinance number 1552, allowing automotive sales and associated uses. On September 16th, 2015, City Council adopted ordinance number 2449, establishing the Mullenex Ford Plan Development and its accompanying master plan that includes the phasing for the previously approved uses on 21 acres. The applicant is now requesting to amend ordinance number 2449 to add the following on the existing PD boundary: 45 feet maximum building height, 2,150 square feet of office, 1,626 square feet for car wash use, 106,288 square feet of storage, parts, service, and parking, 47 new customer parking spaces, 90 new vehicle storage parking spaces, and the items not addressed in the PD and all signage shall comply with the standards of the Land Development Code. Shown are the architectural renderings of the proposed addition. The DRC and Planning Commission recommend approval. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2968 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on October 19th, 2022. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Jean?
This is supposed to be a two-story building, correct? The biggest one, the service center?
That's my understanding, sir, yes.
It's like a, like a, you actually are driving to the second story too, right? It's pretty incredible. Yeah, it's, I'm really excited for this.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Jean or the applicant? Anybody from the pub?
I just wanted to put him to kind of bring his presentation up regarding the sign graphics.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Steve Francis. I'm with Mullenex Ford of Central Florida. Good afternoon, Mayor, fellow commissioners. I'd like to discuss what we propose relative to these banners that you see on this illustration. I have a larger picture of it. I'd like to give you a sense of scale. The building that is on the property where we plan to build the service extension is 417 feet from the road. And what was discussed earlier this year with Jim and the team here at the city was that we'd have the opportunity to provide some lifestyle graphics on the building, which you can still see on the illustration. When we were talking with our attorney, there was discussion relative to, were they signs? Did they fall under the ordinance of signs? And it was brought up by City Council that, talking to our attorney, that they were considered signs. We do not consider these signs. We consider these architectural graphics on the building. A part of the city code, the Land Development Code, for building and facades 4 dot two, dot two, dot three says, "The architecture of the building must incorporate articulation to avoid monotonous blank walls." This building that we're building for our customer is 345 feet long, and it would look very austere inside our complex, our campus that we have for the dealership. So there's also, so we wanted to break the building up and provide something of a graphic design to have the customers on the facility to be able to come into our service department. So the, several of the images proposed are simply natural settings designed as an architectural embellishment to soften the appearance of the typical service department. City Council, we understand, has the authority to authorize the image, even if displaying them would be considered displaying signs based upon your Development Code, Section 5-10-6. The images are over 417 feet from State Route 436. Some of the images are not likely to be visible from 436, given that distance and the landscaping on the site and the two large buildings that already exist on the property. The images are not intended to distract the attention of drivers or pedestrians on 436 or roads. The images are intended to soften, as I said before, the exterior of the service building and attract attention to customers already on the site. If the images were intended to attract, if the images were intended to attract the attention of drivers or pedestrians on Route 436, Mullenex would have asked the images to be on the sales showroom, as you all know, or to be on a quick lane facility. Or we'd be pursuing an actual billboard as an advertisement. Mullenex has offered to prohibit pricing on any of the, these ban, these architectural graphics or any verbiage from being on them as well. We anticipate refreshing and revising images no more frequently than semi-annual, annually. We are willing to pay a nominal review fee to the city each time we request to change the images. So today, and the reason why I wanted to get in front of you is I wanted council city commissioners to approve conceptually that we have the capacity to do this for our facility. We would, in between the two, today's and the 19th, we would work out some verbiage with the city that would be acceptable to the city commissioners. So that's what we'd like to do. We believe it enhances our image within the community. And as you all know, we've been a part of the community now for over, close to 35 years. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, that, what we're approving today is not signage at all in any capacity, right?
The intent was to have the capacity to build the facility predicated on the amendment to the PUD.
That's not listed in here, though.
I'm sorry?
That's not listed in here that I know of.
No, I know it's not. And the reason, and the reason.
But you just want it to be in our heads that, hey, this, we want that approval. You're kind of asking, pre-asking for that approval down the road.
Yep.
I don't quite understand.
The, the original application did have the signage in there that's, let me try to do this. That's noted for, for these three boards. When the, when Michael Rodriguez looked at it, basically, he did feel that it met the definition of signs in our, in our Land Development Code. The City Council, so we, we were hesitant to include that as part of this original approval that is for the site itself. However, like Steve mentioned, we can work up some language that, that you would be comfortable with to include in the, in the actual adoption of the PD, if that's the case.
And that would be done on the second reading, then?
It can be done on the second reading. We can, it's not part of the ordinance heading. You can change the body of the ordinance, as long as you don't change the ordinance heading itself.
Okay.
But it's a, it's something that, that City Council does have the ability to consider. And then, like I mentioned, we can come up with the language if, if you're comfortable with that type of graphic.
And why wasn't it on this one, then?
Pardon?
Why, why didn't we have this on the original, on this first reading?
Well, we do have the, the architectural elevations as part of that in, in the, in the ordinance. However, as I mentioned, staff was hesitant to include it as part of that because we didn't have language built into it in order to allow this. So we knew that the overall site development design works. This is the only component that we couldn't say, yes, it meets code, or no, it doesn't meet code. So we wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to review it or see it yourself to give us the go-ahead to do that language to include in the PD itself.
So.
We can't, we, we don't want to speak for you.
No, agreed. And, and I just want to make sure that we're not.
Excuse me.
I'd like to see the language before we approve it, so I don't want to promise you anything yet and say, okay, well, I'm accepting this first reading and approving it, or we are, and then something changes and now I don't know what that process looks like.
Well, I mentioned, the ordinance heading won't change.
I understand.
The body won't change, the, the design, the plan itself won't change. The only thing that would be added would be the language for the, the graphics that are, that are depicted on the building itself. So you can still approve the first reading. Second reading could or could not include the language regarding the graphics.
Okay.
That's still your prerogative at the next reading, to include that, if you're comfortable with the, with the language.
So, but planning and zoning was this presented to planning and zoning? Or was it presented through DRC, planning and zoning? Was, was the whole graphics presented?
Everything was presented as-is.
Okay. The way you're presenting it today was presented. Did anybody have an issue through DRC, P&amp;Z?
No.
No one questioned the graphics?
No.
On the, on the side of the building?
Nope.
So if it wasn't questioned, I don't understand why it just wasn't included.
Between Planning Commission and City Council, the, the objection regarding the graphics was brought up to staff from, from City Council, from, from the attorney.
If I can clarify, if I can clarify, the language that was presented by the applicant was that this was, they concluded this is not a sign. I cannot advise this council that that item is not a sign. It meets the ordinance, the code definition of a sign. And as a sign, it does not meet the dimensional requirements of the code. They tried to, their conclusions were that what was presented to, to staff, and then I reviewed, was that because it doesn't convey a message, it's not a sign. If we go down that route, then we're, we're looking at regulating the content of a sign. Whereas the city's regulations regarding this sign were strictly dimensional, and that whether it conveys a verbal or non-verbal message is irrelevant, is whatever that message is must be confined to the size requirements under the sign code. Now, what could be brought forth is whether there is, it's up to, because it's within the confines of the PD, these could fall under certain design requirements or design guidelines for this PD. And then within the, within the parameters of the PD, this item can be defined as such and move forward. But I, I cannot accept the language of simply that, it's, it's not a sign. Now, we can, it is a sign, however, if we're gonna treat it as an architectural embellishment, it's such, and we can also revise, review the language in the PD to state that this type of a architectural embellishment is solely limited to this PD. Or whether this council wants to take the prerogative to now reexamine the city's sign code and take into consideration items such as this, such as these wall signs. I mean, Apopka's not as large and architecturally diverse as a city as some of our other cities. I mean, the city does not have a mural code. Our sign code doesn't take these matters into consideration, as opposed to some other cities. Some, some of these things you see along the lines of, I mean, there's, there's similar renderings, like the city of Miami has this. But there's no way we can compare ourselves architecturally with, with the city of Miami. So it has to be something that this council wants to examine. Is it something that's going to appropriately affect the city of Apopka? But my, my opinion at the time, when, when this was presented, was this is a sign. It meets the definition of a sign under the sign code. It's then the prerogative of the council, if you wish to, how to treat this within the parameters of this PD in order for it to move forward or not. But I can't move forward with it simply saying it's not a sign.
But the sign, we're not voting on signage or anything like that tonight, or today. What, what this is specifically asking is, what's being presented is, is what we're approving. On second reading is when we can actually have kind of a more deeper discussion on the sign.
Second reading is gonna be your adoption. So in statutes, Florida statutes requires cities to have two readings on, on every ordinance. So we're presenting this for first reading. Regardless whether it's this ordinance or any other ordinance, amendments can be made between first and second reading.
Sure. So, well, I think that's my point is.
So there's nothing.
We can kind of have that discussion at that point, when it's presented with language that either you're comfortable with or that makes the most sense.
Once the item is presented at second reading for adoption, that's what's gonna go forward, whether it's adopted or not. You can move this item forward to second reading, and then at second reading, if it's not something you wish to adopt, you can, you can deny the application. That's within your, your prerogative. And we, but things can be changed. You can work, there, there is time between now and the second reading for the applicant to work with staff to come up with a appropriate language. Language within the PD to include that this is some type of an architectural embellishment or an architectural feature. And then certain requirements that staff would like to require that it, you know, that the city does have the authority to regulate under a health, safety, and welfare matter. I mean, make sure these have, these sign, this type of architectural feature meets wind load requirements. Is it gonna be violative of the Florida Building Code? Or create a hazard in the event of we just had a hurricane? Are these gonna be giant sails flapping in the wind? Or it's gonna, someone's few blocks away is gonna have a giant mural of a Mustang in their front, over their house? So these are things that, that we can consider, however we want to treat it, within the parameters of, of the PD. But as far as stating that this is not a sign, no. We, we, I cannot advise to conclude that this feature does, is not a sign under our sign code.
Well, my preference is to let's move it forward now, have that deeper discussion about signage or whatever it may be then, on that second reading, kind of beat this to death then.
No, that's fine.
Okay. That, I mean, whatever the rest of the council does, too. The, the only thing I will say about this is we did just send a church to code enforcement because they had similar signage on their property. So there's got to be a little balance here, and we just need to take that into account on second reading. But let's just, at least my thought is to approve what's here, and then we'll deal with the signage from there.
Any other questions for the applicant, for Michael?
Where on the property was this particular facility built?
This is, this is between our existing service facility and our fleet care building in the, in the rear of the property. So it's 417 feet from 436.
Not, not the quick loop, but the other.
Okay, now, what the quick loop is?
No, the other one, the one in the back. It's in the back middle.
That's the current sales center right there. That's their current service center. And then to the left of that.
It's open.
It's west of it. They have a much smaller, you can see here, it's a much smaller building that they're removing and adding this massive 53,000 square foot service center. So it would be to the west of what their current service center is, that's behind the sales center.
Yeah, I've got it on the screen right here.
All right, so it's gonna be close to Roger Williams Road, then?
No, it's to the west. It's west of, west of the current service center.
It's behind a quick lane.
Okay.
Between the sales center and the quick loop, but in the back. In fact, some of these, these graphics, you won't be able to see from the road because it'll be impeded by the quick lane itself.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, any other questions?
No, I, I just, for me, I mean, I've had that conversation, and again, I, I am open to that because, first of all, it's pretty bad planning if that's intended to be an advertising sign, but we have the legal definition, so I think we can dive into that later. But to me, we don't want it looking like a big prison back there. I think it's an embellishment. I think it's artistic. Probably everybody's pretty convinced that's not a Chevy on there, but, you know. I mean, honestly, where that sits, and I've gone by and looked at that, as you said, it is partially hidden. It's internal. I think it's artistic. It brings color and life. And then however we have to deal with that, you know, going forward, I think we can look at that. But that's just my lean right now, is it is architectural embellishment, is that kind of language, and I'd like to explore how we can approach that.
Yeah, we can revise the, our signage ordinance. That's something we need to consider, because the city is growing, and I believe in public art, and having businesses be able to have some kind of art form on their building, I think it's attractive. It encourages foot traffic in the city, and that's, that's the way we want to go with the downtown.
That's, that's.
And I'm with, I'm with, you know, as Commissioner Nesta said, we just finished having a code enforcement with a particular church off Vic Road, and it had to do with signage, defining signage.
Well, not to conflate the two issues, that was a completely different situation we're discussing here. But I, it's your prerogative. But it's your prerogative if you wish to reexamine the sign code, that's fine. It's, one of the issues is that any type of revisions to the sign code, we're not going to be complete in time to affect this property and this application. But we can definitely review any revisions to the sign code, and then take into consideration whether the current sign code, there have been, there have been recent US Supreme, I am always hesitant in touching sign codes, but there have been recent US Supreme Court decisions regarding the constitutionality of sign codes. So if we want to sit down and sit through our sign code to see if we are not, my cursory review is, we're still fine with the most recent Supreme Court decisions in regards to sign codes, but I would advise being careful opening that door so that we don't actually walk ourselves into a constitutional issue in regards to sign codes.
And I think addressing that on second reading would be the best opportunity for that.
As for this specific citation.
Correct, yeah, not, we can do that down.
Okay. Okay. All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? All right, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 2968 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2969.
Ordinance number 2969. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the hereinafter described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Tyler Crusades, Inc., located north and east of US 441, east of Apopka Airport Road, and west of Hermit Smith Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability complex, and an effective date.
Okay, he left me in charge, and I'm trying to catch up on our list. Here we go. Okay, Jean, let her represent. I just needed to look up. Here you are. You're hidden behind that. Can we move that down just a little?
Yes, I will. Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept ordinance number 2969, annexation of the Tyler Crusades properties. The total size of the properties is approximately 40.14 acres. It is north and east of US 441, east of Apopka Airport Road, and west of Hermit Smith Road, abutting Apopka jurisdiction and all boundaries. The recommended motion is to accept ordinance number 2969 and hold it over for second reading and adoption October 19, 2022. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 2969 at first reading, and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson. Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2022-46.
Resolution 2022-46. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, providing for budget amendment.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is Budget Resolution 22-46. As you saw from your pictures earlier from Hurricane Ian, this is a budget amendment to use a million dollars of the reserves. We are moving the over into a grant fund so that we can monitor it, so we can match everything up with FEMA. We have some first estimates that have come through today of about $750,000. This may not be enough. I'm almost sure this probably won't be enough, we probably will come back with some more. But in the meantime, we need to move some funding so we can pay the bills.
Any questions for Edward? Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve Resolution 2022-46.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, City Council reports. Commissioner Nesta?
Let me see here, just National Night Out last night was great, really had a good time. Thank you for Silver Oaks for hosting and being quick to adapt to what we needed there. I don't know if Chief McKinley wants to come speak about any scenarios at all that occurred, just to kind of clarify what actually occurred, but if not, that's okay. Also, the, I want to discuss the Saturday Sounds Saturday, this was the first one Saturday, but we canceled the 5K in the morning, and the 5K people were pretty displeased that we canceled one event in the morning and then still had Saturday Sounds at night. So I didn't know if we have kind of some rules moving forward of how we can articulate that better, so that they understand what the thresholds are for certain events, things like that. And then I just want to clarify a comment I made last meeting, in that the Transportation Department here does coordinate often with Orange Counties as well on every single project. So they do work together, as well as Commissioner Christine Moore. So there's a lot of communication there, and they are working through a lot of our street issues, and it's just catching up with how quick our developers develop. So that's it.
Mr. Smith?
I wasn't able to get over to Silver Oaks last night. We had a National Night Out on Crime at the New Hope Mission Baptist Church over in South Apopka, so I was there with a great turnout. Our mayor was present, he came by and made a visit, and our Deputy Chief Miller was also there. And also, we want to give a shout out to our Orange County Sheriff's Department that was also present as well. This month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Mayor's wearing his bright pink jacket. I guess I need to get one of those. So we want to make sure that we are aware of that for all of our citizens. Also, we need to, I guess, take a look at our homeless situation we have here in Apopka. I went by under the bridge last night, and I thought there was only one homeless person there, and found out there was a dozen. So it seems like the population is increasing, and that could be partly because we are removing part of the habitat with all the development that we have going on in the city. So we need to take a serious look at something that we need to do about our homeless situation here in the city of Apopka.
Mr. Bankson?
Yeah, let me just follow up on the Clear Lake issue, and I did go out there. And just for everyone's knowledge, when we have public comment, we're not allowed to respond to that. So I did not neglect my elderly parents, which they would take umbrage at that. Actually, my father, my mother passed back in 99. My father's remarried, and she's actually a year younger than I, so she would object to that, but we do check on them quite frequently. But I did get to go out, and I had not heard, had not had any correspondence between myself and the Griffiths, although I've known them for years. So I did get to go out there and spend some time with them. I hadn't been reached out to directly, but I had been working on that behind the scenes. So was able to share that with them, they were real pleased with that. And one thing I wanted to bring up, just in trying to research that, and I took that information to you, so I know this is a process, but one of the suggestions was the possibility, and it does appear that there used to be a drainage. And my assumption at that point was when they redid the road, and apparently that was back in the 70s, the trucks, I guess, were having issue of going off the road on those curves, so they redid them. And at that point was when what used to be the drainage across there was gone. We're still looking for maps on that to try and find that. But one suggestion that sounds like, you know, a possibility, because if we did dump that back into Mud Lake, now Mud Lake has nowhere to go. And so that's not necessarily the best, but if there's a way that we can move that to the lift station, and then the lift station, we eventually get it to our ponds, that was one thought of a possible solution. But even then, you've got a private lake, they would have to agree, and then we also have St. John's Water Management, is my understanding. So just in trying to think, what can we do, that's a possibility, but I don't know. I don't want to overspeak there, because obviously that's got to go through a lot more process. So I did turn that information over to staff to look into, see if that is a legitimate possibility. And again, my understanding would be that St. John's would decide when we reach a trigger point, which would allow that to move. So that's really, again, don't want to speak beyond my level on that.
Well, the only I would say to that is that Mud Lake is, we were just trying to estimate, is about one-sixth to one-eighth the size of Clear Lake. So if there is a differential in elevations, it would completely flood that, and then that would then go into either Lake Shepherd or into Upper Lake Doe.
And that's blocked now, so.
Right. Which, I don't know if that's, I don't know if proven that or not, but I know it's been brought up here at council.
And that's why that didn't seem like an option, but to possibly move it over to our other storage ponds, and again, it's quite a distance, but just trying to think outside of the box, what can we do, you know, if we get to that level? That's my report on that.
Commissioner Velasquez?
Well, I'm going to light a note. Saturday Sounds went off without a hitch, it was a beautiful day. We had the Garth Brooks tribute. And actually, to your request regarding the 5K, actually, the Saturday Sounds went on literally minutes before we may have called it, because then we got the electricity, and it was all, and I remember, you went out, right, May, about 4:30 or something? And that's when we had just gotten the electricity. And I had already been getting calls from residents that actually showed up around 4 o'clock, and someone told them it was canceled. And when I got the calls, I said, no, it's on, I'm here. Some people did not return, and I'm hoping that the next Saturday Sounds, that, you know, we are engaging our residents and visitors. But it was a very nice turnout. And of course, Saturday night, I was going to say Saturday Night Live, right? But we, at Silver Oak last night was very nice, and again, we had very nice weather. So that's pretty much it for us here today.
All right. Next up, Michael Rodriguez.
What are we doing? Because I want to take a break.
Okay.
I have to go to the.
All right, well, okay, I'm going to start by reading the heading that's in the agenda, and then I'll provide the instructions. Currently, we're intending to have a closed litigation executive session pursuant to Section 286-011, subsection 8 of Florida statutes. The City Council, City Administrator, and City Attorney will hold a closed litigation executive session to discuss litigation caption Southwick Commons Limited versus City of Apopka. It's Circuit Court Case Number 2022 CA 005470O. The discussion shall be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions relating to litigation. The following individuals will be in attendance at the executive session. Mayor Brian Nelson, Commissioner Doug Bankson, Commissioner Diane Velasquez, Commissioner Alexander Smith, Commissioner Nick Nesta, City Administrator Edward Bass, City Attorney Michael A. Rodriguez, and a court reporter. All others will be required to leave the council chambers during the pendency of the executive session. A court reporter will be present to record the session, and the transcript shall be made part of the public record upon conclusion of the litigation. So at this time, I ask, probably with the assistance of the police chief, to please clear out the council chambers, except for those that were explicitly named in the agenda item.
Okay. I'm going to take a five-minute break.
If you want to take five minutes, then go right ahead.
And while they're doing that, I just want to acknowledge my friends, Pastor Todd and William, that are here with us in the chamber.
They're going to be here for mayor's report.
Oh, they're going to be here for the mayor's report. So you're kicking them out, then you're going to bring them back in? All right, get out.
Pause the camera now.
After our closed legal session. Anyway, I guess we've already, everybody's brought up the National Night Out. What a great event. Thank you to the police and fire department for coming out and hosting that. I tell you, the kids had a great time. I think they learned a little bit. We, we had the mobility folks out there, you know, safety as far as our pedestrians. Obviously it's October Breast Cancer Awareness Month and we will have the lights on at City Hall Friday, Saturday and Sunday as well as the pond, Martin's Pond should be lit up as well pink. So look forward to that. Last thing I want to bring up and thank you for hanging out here for hour and 10 minutes. City serves like we, you know, we have the property there on Lust Road that I know we have some folks talk about, you know, the graffiti on the building. It's the old pre-cooler. And Todd Lambier gave me a call couple of days ago, whatever. And Todd who works with the City of Destiny and City serves, they're, they're looking for some additional storage. And maybe their only storage here in not too distant future. And so we got that big pre-cooler buildings, not great shape, although I think you'd caulk it, the roof. You could keep it from leaking, need some new lighting fixtures and bathrooms could use a hand or two. But anyway, they, they would love to, to enter into an agreement with the city to rent that facility for a dollar a year. That would not only help our community, but you know, if we're able to get some stuff in there this week, they could help Southwest Florida. So just want to make sure everybody's okay with that. I don't need your approval, but sure wanted to bring it to your attention before we enter into negotiations. Cause they want to do it like tomorrow. So just came, yeah, just came.
Which building are we talking about? Which building are we talking about?
The, the property on Lust Road, the big pre-cooler, that y'all called me out for the graffiti.
Was that the one we could see off the 429?
Yes, that's that one.
It's, it's habitable to store stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay.
Would we still be maintaining it then or?
No.
It would be on them?
Yeah. When you're, I mean a five-year lease or whatever we want to come up, we'll, we'll work on that with, there'll be, they'll, they'll, it'll be a triple that. Yeah. Yeah. Everybody, everybody good?
Absolutely. When it comes, when Todd speaks, Pastor Todd, he has been such inspirational and and such a, the causes that you have championed. And I have seen personally firsthand how much you have helped not just residents here in the city of Apopka, but all of Florida. So if you were choosing to store and use a building that, as the mayor says, we have called them out several times on. And, you know, and I, I know that City serves will, you know, clean it up and it'll be of useful for our community and the state of Florida. Absolutely. I am 100% behind you Pastor Todd.
All right. And then the last thing, I'm sorry.
Well, I just want to make it publicly known that I'm an agent with City serves. I just want to make, make that public notice that I am. And as Commissioner Velazquez said, that Pastor Todd, not only just state of Florida, but all over the United States. He, he travels a lot and, and of course William does the same as well with No Child Hungry. That we pack meals on several occasions to send to other countries. And so you got my vote.
I think it's tremendous. And again, for all of the above reasons, ditto, ditto. Yeah. It, it helps us obviously with a situation that we want to rectify as well. And it just perfectly fits with this. And again, as, as stated, you know, this has literally been international outreach from our little Apopka here because of the, the great work you guys are doing. And especially right now with these storms. I can't think of a better time.
Yeah. Cool. And then last thing I just want to bring back, I know I brought it up in the, in the, one of the presentations, but I just want to let y'all know that I tell you, we've got a dedicated staff in our Public Works team and Parks and Rec and, and the EOC covered by police and fire. They just did an amazing job. And I guarantee if you ask around all the other cities in this, in this central Florida area, this, this city, your city of Apopka with our, our team, we, we, we did ourselves proud. And, and it was for the dedication of all those, those folks out there that made it happen. And a lot of you just never see, you know, you don't see the guy out there making sure that the, the gas is in the generator. You don't make, make sure that, you know, the chainsaws are fired up, that, you know, all of the, you know, nursing homes are checked on. And so they just did an amazing job and couldn't be more proud of our, our team here at the state of Apopka. So with that.
I did want to say, Mayor, that we got the Heart and Soul Festival this Saturday. So if you, I don't know if there are any, I don't know if there are any tickets left, but it's going to be a great event.
Yes.